City Council meeting for this Monday, July 1st, 2024. We appreciate all of you here today, and those of you zooming in from home and abroad. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
Mayor Whelan?
Present.
You have a form.
Well, thank you very much. Now, if you'd all please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of the service to this great nation by our men and women serving this country, both at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Nation's Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is our proclamation and presentation portion of the agenda. And first up is the Clover Park School District Report by Board Vice President Brian Thomas. Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to go over the Clover Park School District Report. This year, Clover Park School District graduated 668 students from Clover Park, Lakes High, Harrison Prep, and Gravity Lake K-12. Collectively, 193 students earned awards and scholarships, and 90 were honor graduates. So it was great to, I attended every graduation ceremony, and it was, it was a sight to see and very exciting. Also Superintendent Banner earned the, the Leadership Award from the Washington Association of, Association of School Administrators for his outstanding leadership at the Superintendent's Youth Advisory Council in efforts to evaluate, elevate students. So he received that word, that award that actually is the first year of the award, and so he was the first recipient of that award. He also received the Patriotic Employer Award from the Employer Support Group of the Guard and Reserve, the ESGR Gifts, the Patriot Award to employers who are nominated by service members for the exceptional support provided to them and their families. Superintendent Banner was nominated by the Director of Equity and Community Engagement, Grant Twiman, for his outstanding dedication to active duty and veterans of Clover Park School District staff and their families. So two awards, very well deserved by Superintendent Banner. This year, Clover Park School District also received the Purple Star Award, which recognizes school districts that demonstrate educational and social emotional support to students of military service members as they face transition to a new school. So very exciting. Also, Monday, July 8th, there'll be a open public forum on the budget at 5:00 at the Administrative Building at Clover Park. And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, the number of graduates, is that the highest number we've had?
I believe so, it is.
Wow, congratulations. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Name is Thomas. I was wondering how these districts' meals for youth 18 and under during the summer is going, logistics going smoothly, and is the program getting significant?
Yeah, it's going very smoothly so far. Yeah, haven't had any hiccups at all. So.
And how many school sites are actually involved in distributing?
I will actually have to get back to that. I don't have the exact number of the school sites.
Okay, thank you. I just haven't seen it advertised over the past four weeks or so, you know, before school let out, it was announced, and there were some things.
Right.
Not a lot of specifics to guide people to places. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Lorisella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Summer school is in session, right?
Yes.
And do you know what hours that is, so folks know to be safe and slow down in school zones?
I believe it's the normal, regular school time.
Okay.
It's just not a full day.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for your report tonight. Certainly thank you for your service, and we appreciate all that you and your board members continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it for the proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda. We now turn to public comment. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or preferably to her email address at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the clerk electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments via email from Jill and Rob Jensen.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business during this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. As a reminder, please approach the DIAS, identify yourself by name and residence, and you will have your three minutes to speak. We also allow for virtual comments here in Lakewood. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number, which usually is on the screen, but it's 868-7263-2373, and enter the meeting ID number, as I've indicated. Upon entering the meeting, raise your hand, and we will call upon you in the ordinary course. So I will first call on those folks who are here in person. And so if you would like to address public comment, please queue up to the DIAS, and then I will call on those on Zoom or on the phone after those who are physically present have had their opportunity.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Christina Manetti. I'm from Lakewood. And today I wanted to, gosh, Mary Moss and Jason Whelan are here. I thought I just heard that they were excused. That's strange. So I want to talk about the problem of deception that the city engages in and that it facilitates in, in our city. One of them that's very disturbing to me is the fact that the city has been propagating the idea among residents that it's perfectly within the city's right to condemn and demolish Dr. Majalili's house when the border dispute has not been settled yet, when there are legal cases still to be resolved. And the city was very upset, but when they heard that the city says that, oh, well, he doesn't even own it, then they changed their minds, many of them did. And I think that, that needs to be rectified. You have to tell them that it's not resolved yet. There is a border dispute, a boundary dispute, sorry. Another way that the city facilitates deception in the city is the fact that they're quite loose with their public notice regulations. And for example, I noticed that on the future oil change site, or proposed future oil change site, I noticed that the board is like far off of Gravity Lake Drive. And Lakewood Municipal Code says that a single notice board shall be placed by the applicant in a conspicuous location on a street frontage bordering the subject property. Well, I went there and I thought, because I didn't even notice the board, and I go there all the time because I live nearby, right? And I didn't notice, and of course, I keep my eyes open for those yellow boards. So I went there, and I stepped from the curb to the board, and guess how many steps it was? It was 34 steps to that board. Do you think that I could read it from the street? No, of course not. I would have to trespass, which I did, to get to that board to even see what it said. That is not sufficient public notice. I wrote to the city about it, and I got an answer that said, from Brittany Gilia, or Helia, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce the name, "After discussing the matter with our legal department and the director of planning and public works, the city has concluded that the posted notice for the Take Five Short Plaid was sufficient to be considered complete. The city will not be requiring a renoticing or reopening of the public comment period at this time." Right. That's absolutely wrong. It was not sufficient. The public passing by foot couldn't see it without going 34 steps onto that property and trespassing to read it. And people aren't supposed to trespass, right? That's breaking law, basically. If you're in the car, even more, you're not going to notice it because you're going like 30 miles an hour, right? How are you going to notice? So that was insufficient, and I would like to request the city council repost it, or have them repost it, and reopen the public comment period, because that's the right thing to do. Thanks a lot.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. I believe this afternoon at 5:00, Dr. Majalili handed over his house to the city. I don't quite know the details of it. But of course, I also understand that this is an ongoing legal case, so you're not, not going to comment on it. But there is an issue of deception, which Christina Manetti has just, just been referring to. You, sorry, I'm not, I'm not supposed to address you. The city presented the case of Dr. Majalili as an open and shut case, as something that was absolutely clear, that Dr. Majalili's property was, actually was not his property, there was, where was a boundary issue which was entirely in the city's behavior, sorry, in the city's, in the city's favor. And, you know, people in Lakewood are quite trusting. They trust you, sorry, they trust the city council, and they trust the city to tell the truth. And in this case, you have not told the truth. You have put it out as a, as a fait accompli, as something which is legally clear. It is not clear that the legal case is, has not finished. Yes, you are entitled, the city is entitled to take his house, but there is an issue of compensation. And of course, how much compensation Dr. Majalili is entitled to is very dependent on boundaries. I mean, I believe that you thought that he was owed 200, you know, it was worth $250,000. It might actually be worth considerably more. It might be, for all I know, it might, might be worth several million dollars in terms of what it's actually valued at if the boundaries are as Dr. Majalili said. So you have been completely, completely deceptive, I believe, in terms of presenting the case. And I don't know who you've been misinforming. You've been misinforming not just the city, you've been misinforming employees of the city when they try to present the case. And I do not think that is right. And I also think that in terms of civil rights, we do have a civil rights issue here. I somehow think that the city have treated Dr. Majalili appallingly. I somehow think that if Dr. Majalili, for example, had been a white veteran, for example, a former- for example, had been a white veteran, for example, a former colonel in the U.S. Air Force, he would not have been treated like this. I think this is now absolutely clear. Oh, and just a reminder, I think that the Said case, I know the Said Joachim was shot by a policeman who should have been fired after the Leonard Thomas case. That's grinding through the system. I know that criminal cases have a higher burden of proof than civil ones, but that's coming up. I wonder how much that might cost the city. Anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
That's the last individual that I've seen queue up. But if you're here in the audience and you'd like to address counsel during the public comment period, you are certainly free to do so. Anyone else in the audience would like to address the council during the public comment period? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we'll turn to those who appear on Zoom or via phone. I see three hands raised. The first is Dennis Haugen.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here, a former resident of Lakewood, now a resident of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm glad to see that across the United States, one of the top issues in people's minds now is open borders. You're being a sanctuary state. You've encouraged by that, you've encouraged illegal immigrants, unvetted, who don't go through the port of entry, just come into our country. So we don't know who all's here, but we hear these terrible reports. This week, we just heard that 50 ISIS crossed the border. But I think progress-wise, we've got to make a lot of people across the country to realize that. And it certainly is going to affect small cities. And much of the crime, many criminal aspects happen from illegal immigrants. And of course, it seems like there's something developing. They go to the center of a metropolitan area, and then the suburbs for quite a little while don't pay any attention of it. Then always said, they forget the fact that criminals can be on wheels. And then always say they have smash and grabs and other forms of quick crimes. But then many, many of you, depending on who your governor is, don't have that additional help. Your governor proved himself incompetent three and four years ago with the takeover of six blocks in Seattle. Every, almost every police force in the nation now, it seems to me, is going to have to be coordinating with a bigger force. Because if they come on with a thousand people throwing rocks at once and you only have 200, you need to have a plan. And you have a plan, you have to talk to somebody. That means all the forces that you would have to ask for help, including the National Guard, you'd have to talk ahead of time, you know, and decide just how you're going to proceed, what kind of strategy you're going to have. You don't have that. You have an incompetent governor. He proved himself that way four years ago. And if something happens, there's no reason to believe that he would be any more effective today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is Jill Jensen.
Hi, just a second. I have to pull up my document.
My document.
I'm having a lot of feedback.
Jill Jensen, if you have two devices that are streaming either YouTube or the webinar for the council meeting, you'll need to turn one of those off so you don't get the feedback.
Okay, could you go to the next speaker, please, and I'll try to screen on.
We'll let the city clerk advise the caller. Thank you. So the next is just an individual by the name of Jill, it appears. That may have been her second device, perhaps. Ms. Jensen, do you want to try again now?
Ms. Jensen, would you like to try to unmute yourself?
Okay, let me just. I apologize. I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, if you have two devices on, you need to turn one off.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I've muted you again. If you were on two different times, you might want to leave the meeting from one device and stay in on the other. We are, we believe you're on the meeting twice here.
Why don't we skip down just for a moment to the next caller? I see Lance Hungerford. I don't see a hand raised, but if you'd like to provide public comment, Mr. Hungerford, you're certainly welcome to. Mr. Hungerford, if you'd like to, you may just be listening in, which is absolutely fine. So I will then turn to Ms. Jensen one last time to see if we've got a good connection.
Jill Jensen, it appears you're unmuted. If you'd like to provide comments.
Okay, so.
Ah, that sounds good.
We can hear you now without the feedback.
Okay, now I just have to get back to my document. I apologize if I had this all pulled up, but let me see.
Let's go ahead and we got to start our clock, Ms. Jensen.
No, that's not it. I'm sorry. I submitted my document to each of the council members as well as pertinent city employees. So I'll just let it rest as that for the evening. I did want to read it publicly so if people were not attending that they could hear it. But it's regarding interlock and drive and the bridge closure. So if you would please take the time to read what I submitted, I would greatly appreciate it. And we do sincerely appreciate the council's efforts to take the swift action that you have in getting the bridge closure addressed. And we are offering in our comments some suggestions for opportunities to mitigate interlock and road that could be a win-win in our eyes for the Lakewood city residents. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else with a hand raised on Zoom or either on the phone?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public comment period closed. Next is the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of June 10th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June 17th, 2024. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $3,640,594.21 for the period of May 16th, 2024 through June 14th, 2024. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,53,431.01 for the period of May 16th, 2024 through June 15th, 2024. E, motion number 2024-42, authorizing a sponsorship from Amazon in the amount of $15,000 in support of Summers Fest. F, motion number 2024-43, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Bear Cock Construction in the amount of $2,599,957 for the American Lake Park Access Improvement Project. G, motion number 2024-44, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Quig Bros, Inc. in the amount of $706,000 for the Lake Silicon Bridge Repair Project. H, resolution number 2024-10, setting a public hearing on August 5th, 2024 to consider the vacation of a portion of 100th Street Southwest, lying west of Decovan Drive and east of Silicon Lake. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, American Lake, Lake Management District Number One Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of February 29th, 2024. And two, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May 15th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to have removed from consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councilmember Brandstetter, that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Ordinance is, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 807, authorizing the acquisition of real property under the threat of condemnation or by condemnation for park purposes, authorizing payment thereof from the city's general fund or from such other monies that the city may have available or attain for the acquisition, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Very good. And for this, I'll have our city attorney, Ms. Walker, provide a brief overview on the nature of the motion, and we'll proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, and members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. This item comes before you for condemnation of a parcel that would round out your current plaza area near the Colonial Plaza, and that would be the smaller parcel that is adjacent to a parcel where the former QFC building is. It, for lack of a better way of putting it, it's a standard garden or variety exercise of the city's authority to acquire property to enhance its parks. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Maybe I can throw out the softball on this, assuming council adopts the ordinance as presented. Can you briefly describe the next steps in timing from a legal standpoint?
Yes, Mayor Whelan, I'm actually glad that you reminded me of things that I should say in my presentations, not just for the council, but so other people are aware. This comes after we've sent a letter to the property owner. And we send a letter basically saying we'd be willing to buy the property. If we can't acquire the property for fair market value at that stage, if there's not an agreement or if the amount's not agreed, then we go to this stage where the council authorizes us to go through a process where we get an appraisal for the property, and ultimately, we go to court. And what the court will do is it's a two-part analysis. One is, is the city acquiring the property for public purposes? A park is pretty much universally considered a public purpose. And number two, how much should be paid for it? Because the city cannot pay significantly more than market value. It's taxpayer dollars. It's going to a public benefit, but we're not going to spend extra tax dollars, which would be paid on other public benefits. So what'll happen next is we'll go to court and we'll start that process. Frequently, what we'll do is we'll ask for possession and use of the property, and the person will sometimes agree to that because the real disagreement is overpriced. So we'll see how that goes in the next stages. Does that get at what you were asking?
Yes. And just for the benefit of the public, kind of rounding out your response, as you've indicated, the city first provided a letter offer, complete with information from an appraisal that the city obtained, offering the full market value of the appraisal of the subject property.
That is correct, Mayor Whelan. And in fact, property owners are entitled to fair market value.
Absolutely.
And so I think a lot of times, people hear eminent domain or condemnation, and they think that somehow the city's getting some kind of a better deal through doing it that way. But in reality, the court is obligated to find what the fair market value is, absent somewhere along the way us reaching an agreement with the property owner, which is also allowed. It's not unheard of. Once we start this process, for a property owner to come to agreement.
Very good. Any questions of Ms. Walker before we turn to the ordinance? Yes, Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, the appraisal report that we used prior to making the offer to those was, it's now 90 days old. In our discussions or our efforts in the meantime to try to get a response to the letter that we sent to that, are there any things that would cause some of the information in the appraisal report to be viewed differently?
In this particular case, I'm not aware of any such thing, but that's also not an unusual occurrence for something to change in the market. And what would happen here, as with any condemnation action, eminent domain action, is we would get a current appraisal. It's also not unusual for the property owner to get their own appraisal. And then you have dueling appraisals in the court action to try and figure out what the court might want to do between the two.
In the most recent condemnation action that we had, the matter was resolved in two steps. One, the decision that a condemnation takes place and the property would transfer to the city on a certain date. But then there was a later date by which the court would actually make an action to determine the fair market value that the city would have to pay. Was that unusual, or is that what we should expect as this moves forward if the court approves a condemnation?
Councilmember Brandstetter and members of the council, it really does depend on each particular action. In the case that you're describing, we're dealing with someone who is losing their residence for park purposes. Here we have what would arguably be a commercial property, arguably was going to be marketed at some point. And so there may be some different dynamics to what people are expecting as they go forward with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions of Ms. Walker? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 807? I move adoption of ordinance 807.
Second.
Been moved by councilmember Bokey, seconded by councilmember Brandstetter, that we adopt ordinance number 807. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say for the record that I am very much in support of this particular ordinance. I think this will further our legacy plans for the urban park or one of the urban parks that we are seeking as a matter of council priority. It lies adjacent to the existing Colonial Plaza. It makes great sense to round out the amenities in the central part of our city for our residents. And I look very much forward to turning this into a wonderful park area with a variety of amenities for the benefit of residents in this local adjacent neighborhood area. Seeing no further hands raised for further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance number 807, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 807 has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished business. Mr. Coffield, do we have any unfinished or new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Very good. So, next up is the city manager for his report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, I'd like to call upon our deputy city manager and chief financial officer, Todd Kraus, who'd like to give you an update on our first quarter financial report, as well as some financing options as we begin to develop the 2025-2026 proposed biennial budget. Ms. Kraus?
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. So this is the first quarter financial report, and I'm going to give somewhat of a high-level update. So if you'd like to follow along, I'm on page 100 of your packet, and this is the general and street fund summary, the city's main operating funds. Similar in all other reports that you've seen, if you look on the right-hand side, there's a comparison for the 2024 actual versus the 2023 actual, and then a 2024 year-to-date actual versus the year-to-date budget. So just looking down at the subtotal on the operating revenues, you'll see that our operating revenues compared to 2023 actual is is three hundred and seven thousand, or about two percent more than what we had received in two thousand and twenty three. Compared to the budget, year-to-date budget, we're up about four hundred and eighty thousand, or three and a half percent. On the expenditure side, the expenditures are exceeding what we had in two thousand and twenty three, and that's, you know, with the personnel growth and some contracts and such. But compared to the budget, we have exceeded by a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And you'll see within the different departments, some departments are over and some departments are under. But this is prior to the city manager's directive. He issued a directive in May to pause on spending and really limit what is being spent and focusing on what is really mandatory or important, but stop with the nonessential. So then I'll flip over to, actually, I'll stay on that page. So what I've done here is really just take off the top based on budget, the reserves that the city council had implemented through the financial policies, and that is maintaining the twelve percent target for ending fund balance reserves on the contingency general fund reserves and the strategic reserves, plus we have not spent anything on the opportunity fund for economic development. So our undesignedated, but will spend it throughout the year, is three point six million dollars. Skipping over to sales and use tax on page one oh three, you'll see that compared to two thousand and twenty three for the first quarter, sales tax is up by just forty seven thousand. And, you know, just taking a more conservative approach, the comparison to the budget is a hundred and sixteen thousand to the good. A lot of information has been provided on the sales tax in terms of analysis and where the money is coming from, so I'm not going to cover that portion of it. And then similar to sales tax for the city of Lakewood, we also receive some criminal justice sales tax and park sales tax. Those are following the same trend, so we're seeing some increases there. On page one ten is your utility tax, and utility tax compared to two thousand and twenty three is slightly down by sixty four thousand or four percent, and compared to the budget, it's up by twenty three thousand or less than two percent. On the gambling tax on page one eleven, we had a business that closed temporarily and is starting to pick up some. But just overall, compared to two thousand and twenty three actual, a lot of the businesses are seeing a decrease. On page one twelve, admissions tax, we're seeing a slight increase, particularly we received a large distribution for February, and that was really some back taxes that hadn't been paid, and they made those payments. Page one fourteen, our state shared revenues is down, and that's due to the reduction in high crime. And jail services on page one seventeen, that is really contributing to some of the overages that you're seeing in the police department. Plus, the good news is with the police department, we're fully staffed, which hadn't been that way for quite some time. On page one twenty seven, I'm skipping over to municipal court.
Let us get there here real quick.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So page one hundred and twenty seven, we're still seeing a decline in the revenues. So compared to where I thought we should be, we're down by thirty six thousand and or thirty six percent. Compared to two thousand and twenty three, we're seeing a decrease of about eighty seven hundred dollars or twelve percent.
And just while we're on this subject, I know you probably haven't reflected elsewhere, but what's the guesstimate of the increased defense costs? These would be the decreased revenues from municipal court operations.
Sorry, I didn't come prepared with that number, but it is going to be.
It's higher.
Yeah, we're looking at an increase for two thousand and twenty four, and I can't remember, so I don't really want to say if it's a hundred thousand or even more, but we're anticipating that it's just going to continue.
Yeah, it's at least a six-figure increase.
And just with the, you know, our ability to obtain public defenders, we're having to pay a higher cost to even get to them.
Right.
So just that in itself.
Yeah, thank you for that.
State law.
Mr. Bokey has a question or a point?
I'm, I have a question. I want to go back to the jail thing, and I can't remember what page it's on. It's up significantly. What's our budget for the year and kind of where do you expect that to, do you have any idea where it might land, and you have two or three more months?
I will tell you, on the jail budget, it is eight hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, we're at thirty four percent of the budget. So two hundred and sixty, so yeah, it really gonna be over a million dollars.
Yeah, we're heading north of them. Okay. So, and is that in the police department budget?
Yes, it's in the police department budget.
So are you thinking we're gonna have to do a supplemental to them, or?
Or.
Or are they gonna have enough?
You know, curb other spending, yeah, because any increases in the budget will require some type of decrease.
You don't know yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think you've also been getting some updates from the city manager in terms of where we are in the real estate excise tax and such. So it looks like with real estate excise tax, we may be coming in at the same amount that we came in last time. I just kind of skipped there. On page, I'll skip over to development services permits. That's an area that is doing very well. And it's not quite reflected in this report, but for the Q two report, you'll see that there's a substantial increase for Western State Hospital, but also there will be a corresponding increase on the expenditure side, but more revenues than expenditures. On cost recovery on page one forty one, and I'll wait till you get there. For development services, our target is eighty five percent. And currently for first quarter, we're at eighty one percent. But looking over the five-year period between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty three, we're at ninety one percent. I'm gonna skip over to parks and recreation, which is on page one seventy eight.
Well, I'm here. That's too easy. We're there.
Okay, so on page one seventy eight is the parks and recreation cost recovery, and the target there is forty five percent. We're currently at forty percent. But, you know, things will change as we get into the second quarter. But over a five-year period between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty three, we're at forty six percent. And that concludes my presentation. At the end of the report, you'll see performance measures, some My Lakewood, three one one and such. But that concludes my financial presentation.
Lots of great thorough data. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Mr. Bokey?
So the opioids are in the news. So when we go to page one twenty, starts on one twenty one, you explain the settlements. And then on page one twenty two is the sheet. It says six twenty four Jansen J and J. Did we receive that two hundred and eighty nine thousand?
Yes, and I have to tell you that when, when I looked at the website, and I just checked it last week, the amount that we were supposed to get according to their calculations is more like two point six million dollars. The actual amount which they confirmed is going to be a one-time, which we did receive, distribution of two hundred and eighty nine thousand. I have no idea how. That is the number that shows up.
So the number that showed up, so this is one time. They're not gonna pay over a series of years like other folks are.
It's just a one-time distribution, and that's all the city's going to get.
Okay, so then I'm a little bit, what's our current fund balance?
Our current balance is, what we received is life-to-date, three hundred and seventy three thousand, five hundred and sixty seven.
Okay, on page one, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three hundred and seventy three, five, okay, so received, and we haven't spent any at all?
We spent a very small amount, and I'm sorry, it's my apologies. It is, we received three hundred and seventy three thousand plus the two hundred and eighty nine thousand. And the amount that we spent is about twenty three hundred dollars for the administration portion.
Okay. And you believe that two eighty nine is correct, not the two point something million?
I actually confirmed it with the city attorney. He, she got the same information. We also confirmed with the, our contacts, and they also confirmed that.
And then there was news last week that the the big Kahuna story is gonna continue, because now the Sackler family, I guess, is gonna be on the hook for more money perhaps. Is that?
Which one are you referring to?
Well, I went to the Supreme Court, and they said that the settlement letting the family off the hook was not acceptable.
City attorney is our point of contact with the opioid, and so she'll give an update.
I can give a more detailed update at a future time. As you know, this is coming in piecemeal, depending on who the settlement is with, what stage the litigation is in, and Sacklers are certainly off the hook for purposes of this bankruptcy action, but that doesn't necessarily mean that parties who are entering settlements are off the hook because they've agreed to pay.
Yeah, I took it as they could actually end up paying more. But we don't know, now the timing's all. If Louie, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Kraus? Well, thank you again for you and the efforts of your team for all the good financial reporting, keeping us surprised. We appreciate that.
So the next piece that I have, and I kept it separate, is the financing options. And so the, really, the purpose of bringing this up to the city council is to get your feedback on, in advance of the twenty five and twenty six budget. So what I provide is going to be very, very high level, or what is in the packet is very high level. So for the each of the options that I, well, and you've heard this before, because city managers updated this in his, his budget updates, but, you know, for the, going into the twenty five and twenty six budget, there are some key drivers that are going to increase costs for the budget for the city, and those include the public defender costs, the inflation that is outpacing the revenue growth, and we've seen that, you know, consistently throughout the budgets, and cost of animal control, rising personnel costs, and information technology in support of the police department, such as the cameras that we have. And then also for city operations, such as the new ERP system and cybersecurity overall, it has increased the cost of operations. But this is, the financing options for city council to consider and provide some feedback is for operational purposes. We have identified the utility tax, gambling tax, business and operations, occupation tax, the property tax, levy, lid lift, and the excess levy. And then for capital purposes, we've identified both property tax, the levy, lid lift, as well as the excess levy. And then you have the two options for the transportation benefit district by increasing the vehicle licensing fee or the sales tax. And then there are some special purpose options that you have, and that is the sales tax for either the cultural access program or the housing-related services, and then property tax for the affordable housing as well as the cultural access. So in your packet, you'll see, you know, the, what the maximum amounts are, and when they have to go to vote, and what's, how much revenues is generated, and then how much, you know, we could bond with those dollars. But for, for purposes this evening, really, is just to get your feedback. One area that we're going to be looking at is increasing the utility tax rates. And so for the utility tax, you know, we have limited the six percent. There are some exceptions for cable and for cable, as well as the sewer, solid waste, and stormwater. Those are currently at the six percent. But if we were just to take a look at increasing electricity and natural gas, taking the current five percent to the six percent, based on two thousand and twenty three revenues, it would generate about five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars annually. For telephone, we're currently at the max. But if we wanted to go above that, go to the voters, each one percent increases about ninety four thousand dollars of annual revenue to the city.
We can go five to six, council-matic?
Yes. But, you know, under state and federal law, there is no increase on solid waste or swim. So each one percent, if we were to increase both of those, that would be about two hundred and twenty four thousand in additional revenue. So, so that's, that's where we're headed for the budget process. But again, just seeking your feedback this evening.
What other municipalities are at the six to seven percent for utility taxes locally?
I did not research that, but that's something that I can come back with. But I also want to mention that, you know, those financing options that I mentioned, the other two pieces that we're doing is development services, is reviewing the overall development permits, as well as the rental housing safety program fees. As you know, the current rental housing safety program fees are twelve dollars. But, you know, the operations and the staff that it supports, that amount is not covering it, so.
Any questions of Ms. Kraus on the options set forth in the packet? Again, this is high-level discussion at this point, because we haven't dug into the twenty five, twenty six budget as yet. We're getting some information upfront. Mr. Branstadter?
That a couple of the options further down the list refer to special uses where for sales taxes or property taxes to be done. But it talks about cities can only do it if the county has not. So are the ones on the list all ones that are available to us because the county has not?
I have to go back and think about this. I, I did this for the March presentation, and the whole idea there is only showing what the city has an option for. So if the county's already done it, then no, the city would not be eligible for those.
So for instance, the cultural access program sales tax, the county has not imposed such a tax, and we could?
So actually, I, I can't speak to that, that one here. I have in here just a quick summary. And I didn't do the entire packet as I did in March, so I don't recall if the county has imposed that one or not.
Okay, is that a similar situation with the?
Sales tax.
Affordable housing property tax? That's, 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 that's number ten.
Number ten.
On the options list.
Yes, number nine, retail sales tax for the housing and related services. They can be imposed as long as the county has not imposed it. Same with the affordable housing levy under the property tax.
And then with respect to the gambling tax, although the chart indicates we could increase up to a certain amount, but in the report that you gave us earlier, it showed that of the four major entities that are collecting gambling tax, three of them were lagging the budget estimates, even giving the current thing, and is, is that an indication that they're those businesses are struggling?
You know, the best that I could work with is two thousand and twenty three. I didn't make an estimate for, at that time, make an estimate for where I thought the two thousand and twenty four gambling tax was going to end up, just considering that it's only been three months. When you see the second quarter report, I think that'll give us a better indication of where we're at. So for example, I think it was one of them where they stopped business summer of last year. summer of last year, but I'd have to go back and take a look at each of the individual returns. If that's something that's the city council is interested in, I would need to do a little bit more research to replace twenty-twenty-three estimates with where I think will be in twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
Councilmember Laurella and then councilmember Bokey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Kraus. Uh, I wanted to echo what the mayor had asked about comparing to other local municipalities to see what sort of rates they're charging. Uh, as well as it would be beneficial to me to understand for the average homeowner or resident of our city, what this increase would mean to the taxes they have to pay out of pocket.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I lost my place here. Um, a, a couple of items, you, the utility tax that you talked about. Find it one eleven, I think on our. Thought you printed how much it was. It's not, it's it's five percent only in part of the city.
It's five percent for electricity and natural gas.
For everybody?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
But it's a tax to the business and then the business can pass down the taxes to the consumer.
Is it the utility tax or the franchise fee?
Utility tax. So, you know, franchise fees are accounted for differently. Uh, they're in a whole separate account, so I'm looking at just the utility tax. The franchise fees is something that we'd have to, you know, go back and negotiate.
Okay, so on page one thirteen of our packet, the utility tax shows as, and you've got it all listed here. Thank, thank you. And it's Comcast, six percent, phone, cable, six percent, Integra Communications, six percent, Lakeview Light and Power, five percent.
Yeah, so.
Puget Sound Energy, five percent, TPU Light, six. So between our three electricity providers, we have two rates, which seems odd to me.
So the utility tax rates and then there are franchise, uh, fees and non-compete. So they're applied separately.
Okay, so for TPU Light, we just charge a non-compete at six percent, but we don't charge utility tax?
Correct.
Okay, but for Lakeview Power and Light and Power, we charge five percent utility tax, but we don't charge a non-compete?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just saying we're going to true those up?
But when you mean, what do you mean by true?
They'll all be the same.
Um, that is to be determined and city manager is saying yes.
Okay. Okay, so the T, the TBD um, option, let me get there way down at the bottom. The TBD, the TBD goes, it's my understanding that TBD goes into its own fund.
Yes.
The problem is the general fund. So how does increasing the TBD help the general fund?
So TBD currently is at the twenty-dollar rate. General fund provides seven hundred thousand per year, um, towards capital projects. If we had more TBD funds, we could free up general fund.
Okay, so we are, so the proposal would be, if you, if we go that route, would be to increase P T B D by some amount and then reduce the amount coming from the general fund?
That's one, one option. The other option is if you have competing projects and you need more financing, this is another option to finance those capital projects.
Okay, so it's to protect the general fund. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, well, Ms. Mayor, I, I, I would just say that the the fact that we're at five percent rate on electricity and natural gas is a decision that this council has made numerous times when this has come up. You know, and it had to do with that is a rate that is particularly directly tied to the cost of housing, both for renters and others, particularly as those two utilities deal with heat and cooling and climate things to do that. And that is why in the past, we've not chosen to go as high as where we are. And we're in an environment and we are in of, of where we're having many conversations about affordable housing and we keep dealing with that. Thirty percent of income number of folks being able to deal with housing and, and your utilities um, and, and heat being a significant utility is a, uh, is an element of that. So I am not inclined to reverse course and, and in just, just go because the state has a higher maximum limit that we can go to. Um, that, um, because I think we've, we've made a good decision that remains valid even more so given the affordable housing situation of, of, of many in our city that we can at least mitigate a few costs, which, um, you, you know, for, for, for particularly for some of the lower income residents of the city, you know, um, I, I know of people who in the winter who have electric heat have yeah, you know, electric bills in the multiple hundreds of dollars. Okay. And while we, we say the tax isn't much, it's being able to go and do that. You know, I recall that when Tacoma Public Utilities came and, and, and we were, we're talking about their franchise fee and that they, and, and we asked them why, we, we liked for people to be billed five percent because that's what it was for electricity. And they just said, well, they're, unfortunately, we don't get to say that. That, that they, they, they were tied by some, 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 some rules that would, that, that, that the accounting would become too possible for them to have a five percent rate for Lakewood and a six percent rate for Furcrest and, and for that to do that. And so that, because it's a franchise fee, they're, they're charging all the residents six percent. And so they're, they're at least passing the whole six percent on to us because that's what people are paying to be able to go and go, go and do that. But, uh, I would want to stay away from on natural gas and electricity of raising the utility tax um, on those, um, on the, on the, on, on the gambling tax, um, if you'd asked me fourteen years ago, okay, for those of you that were, that were with me that then, you know, I was, uh, I, 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 I am not a strong supporter of, of gambling or wasn't then, although it's been, uh, something that, and that the, many of the negatives around having gambling establishments in the city that I envisioned haven't come to pass. Um, and that, uh, there are a significant number of people employed at those, in those businesses in the city to be able to go and do that. But we did have a discussion about raising that gambling tax before. And we, if we're going to seriously consider that, we should again ask those businesses exactly how it will affect not so much their bottom line, but the, the their employment numbers of whether they would be telling staff and, and, and people would lose jobs if we essentially made an almost doubling of the gambling tax, given the, the rate we have versus the rate that, that goes on. Because the rate that we have was kind of set is so to not disrupt employment at those facilities to do that. Um, that, uh, I, I have, I have, I have, I have, I have less concerns with doing the council manic things that we could do with the, uh, transportation benefit district because I think those are, um, those, those are tax dollars that is easy for us to show benefit to the public. Uh, uh, I mean, you know, we, you know, we, we, we have any number of projects now that are being bonded with, bonded with revenue from the current rate in the transportation benefit district. But we could end up over the next few years of not necessarily being able to do new, new projects while we pay off that debt service. Uh, and so increasing that rate to the extent that we're allowable the, makes some sense because it would allow us to perhaps bond some additional package of projects. And we could get to a point in the transportation benefit district of where we're bonded a set of projects for X number of years and then midway through that bonded another generation of projects. And then when the first one just paid off, we'd have revenue to bond a third and it could become a, uh, a systemic way to do that in a way that, uh, the, the, the public would constantly be seeing benefits.
Any other comments on that? Again, they're looking for some feedback. I'll, I'll give some feedback and then Mr. Bokey may have some. I, I hear what Mr. Branstadter is saying on the, um, utility tax. But that's why I kind of want to find out what other jurisdictions are doing. Yes, there's an impact on residents, residential tendencies for sure and the cost of housing. The other thing, again, we're looking at Hobson's choices here, right? How do we do the best we can to raise a reasonable amount of revenue to make sure we cover essential municipal services without unduly burdening the residents. But any utility tax also impacts, uh, our businesses, right? And when we get large manufacturers or light manufacturers that come to town, when I was on the Econ Development Board, one of the first things that they ask is what are the rates for uh, utilities in your jurisdiction or in the county? And that tends to be an issue, uh, as is B and O tax, right? As is all these opportunities for taxation and, and you'll find uh, distaste among any particular group with any particular tax. So again, it's kind of going back, what's the best feedback we can provide to you? Uh, from my fifteen years here, uh, I think that there is great distaste for any sort of increase to property taxes. Uh, because there are plenty of hands in the pockets of the taxpayers, uh, by way of taxing districts, whether it's our friends with West Pierce, uh, or the school district or the other jurisdictions, certainly the city gets a smaller portion than most. But we're the ones that seem to be quote unquote blamed for taking the most, even though factually that's not accurate, we know that. The property taxes tend to be very challenging for, uh, folks on fixed incomes. Certainly they would impact similarly those residential tenants who are paying rent, uh, as well as our, our senior members of the community that are on fixed incomes. I have come kind of to a conclusion in my own beady little mind that if you're going to pick a lesser of any evils, uh, you know, in addition to making sure we scrub our own budget for purposes and making sure that our expenditures are, are appropriate in all the various categories, which I know you do a great job of. But looking at the B and O tax, it's long been something that we have prided ourselves on not having in the city of Lakewood. But as I look around the various communities in the South Sound, South Puget Sound, many have them. Uh, but they also have, for example, on page two fifty-two, different scenarios. So I know some jurisdictions apply, uh, a B and O tax to certain grocery receipts over a dollar amount per year in an effort to protect small businesses and we could do something likewise. So if we looked at whatever the need may be, if you're looking at the utility tax that would raise collectively between the two components, seven hundred fifty thousand, pick a number roughly, you could say, okay, what would we have to do to raise seven hundred and fifty thousand? Well, the, the scenario that Ms. Kraus provided, uh, provides potentially three point one uh, or one point six at certain levels, uh, over a twenty thousand per year sort of protected base. So we could pick a different base. If we wanted to protect small businesses with revenues uh, under a hundred thousand a year, we could do that or two hundred thousand, whatever we want to do. Whatever we needed to, to fiddle with to make it palatable to still achieve the same end goal, which may be a seven hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand dollar revenue generation. And I think, uh, you know, while all of these costs get passed down to the consumer, this is one that may be at the end of the day more acceptable, uh, than the other options, in my humble opinion. Uh, if you have a cap that protects small businesses in the community at pick a number a hundred or two hundred thousand in gross revenues. That's just kind of my feedback, uh, you know, doing this now for fifteen years. Any other thoughts, Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm on the list on page two forty-seven, so I'll just start with the utility tax. I, I do appreciate Councilmember Branstadter's remarks. But I do think it's a little odd that some people pay five and other people pay six. And I'm not even sure it's legal in my, in my head. We've gotten away with it for years, but, um, and, and it looks like we're doing it because one's a franchise fee and the other's, the five percent's the utility tax. But, um, I think it's something people are used to paying. So let me preface the remarks, what, while we're being asked about what taxes will increase, we don't know the extent of the hole that we're at being asked to fill. Nor do we know how much any, we haven't even talked about reductions yet in, in how we could fill that hole. So I'll preface remarks on, we don't know how big the hole is and we don't know what other reductions can be made out there. Um, so I, I would be with Councilmember Branstadter again, but I, I just don't know anything about what their economics are. I think they're not all that good. So, um, I don't, I don't know the gambling tax will, will actually work. Um, you know, never, never been a fan. Um, I, I, I think the mayor stated very eloquently how it may work and I, I get it. There's a lot of other cities that don't have it. There's a lot of other ma, larger cities that do. Um, property tax, levy, lid lift, if all those go to the voters, I can almost predict. And we'd say, what's it for? And oh, it's for general government. Um, I'll take odds on that, you know, it won't pass. Um, the TBD intrigues me, the, the, the moving TBD funds and to pay for, um, and to relieve the general fund. I mean, the general fund has been generous to the, and, and, and that's something this council supported using general fund monies to help, you know, kind of jumpstart our whole transportation side. But I think we do need to, to seriously consider that. Um, there just aren't a, a lot of ways to pay, for cities to pay for roads. Um, don't know if I'm interested, back to utility tax, franchise fees of, of, um, cracking seven percent, but um, I mean, maybe we could on stormwater. We could turn around, raise the stormwater, or I don't know if we need to raise the stormwater rates this time. I know before we were in, we had to raise the rates a lot because they hadn't been raised since the start of cityhood. They've actually been lowered. So we've raised them at least once, maybe two times. And then we could come back with a, a higher fee on that because that's really us on ourselves, right?
Well, the stormwater, if you're talking about the swim rates versus the utility tax placed on those swim fees, um, the swim fees themselves benefit the enterprise fund. The stormwater component benefits the general fund. But overall, on the utility tax on the storm, um, I just have that information right here. On the storm portion of it, a, you know, each one percent is about a fifty-two thousand dollar increase.
Okay, on the utility tax, so it's not a ton. Um, okay, and then I imagine you'll come back with fee increases in various areas also because we haven't done those in a while. Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
Any other thoughts to share or feedback? Maybe bitterly until we kind of get closer to the Maybe bitterly until we kind of get closer to the crunching of numbers, obviously, and it becomes much more real. Mr. Caulfield?
Well, so first of all, Mayor and Council, thank you for your feedback. This is actually helpful. I do want to iterate that, you know, when it comes to the budget, you know, this is not something new, this is something I've been communicating for well over two years now, that 25, 26 is going to be hard. And actually, it's now harder because of now the public defense that we knew that was going to go up, but we didn't know, it's going to exceed, it could be a million, I mean, our cost alone in public defense could go from half a million to 1.5 million or even greater, beginning in 2025, certainly by 2026. Those are huge numbers in our general fund because our general fund is only $50 million. But the financial stress that we have is is on the operations side and it's specifically in the general fund. So, you know, your capital programs, parks, transportation, many of your other programs are very sound. It's it's just a general fund. So that's the area that that we're focusing on. And Councilmember Bokey does, you know, make a good point, you know, doing a, you know, a swap out and things like that, that's certainly an option with some of the financing sources. The biggest challenge that we have as as a city is from an operations standpoint, you can see it in the tables that Ms. Kraus put together, is there's plenty of funding to go to the vote of the people. Cities do not do well, and that's just a fact. And it's not a Lakewood issue, cities do not do well with the voters because the voters expect us to figure to figure it out. But even then, the funding that you can take to the vote of the people is generally speaking very restrictive for a specific purpose. So we're very limited in the revenue choices that are available for day-to-day operations in the general fund. And so hence the discussion and, you know, we're trying to just stay out ahead of you as we develop the budget. So again, Mayor and Council, I'll say that this has been helpful in the feedback as we develop options and alternatives for your consideration later this summer and fall.
I'd like to provide one other thought and I'll turn it to Mr. Branstad. Sounds like he has another comment. You raise a good point on the public defense contract. We have heard and all the other cities are grappling with the reality that the costs of the public defense work is increasing, not just slightly, but somewhat dramatically because of Supreme Court decisions and otherwise. It begs the question, maybe, on a larger sort of policy discussion on public safety, you know, what what misdemeanor crimes that we charge have the greatest bang for our buck? Meaning deterrence, accountability, all those kinds of things. It's interesting. And then when you look at, are we charging everything in the kitchen sink and yet only getting the appropriate public impact of less than that? I don't know. I see fines and forfeitures declining. And so, you know, one wonders, should we be more strategic as a matter of policy in our public safety agenda and advise what misdemeanor crimes or gross misdemeanor crimes are going to be worthy of charging that would generate public defense costs for the benefit of the residents? It's hard to say.
So Mayor, I would just say be careful what you ask for there because if we go down, well, first of all, I'll just say that our prosecutors do, as you well know, have discretion.
Yeah.
And they exercise that accordingly based on whatever the case of the situation is. I would be concerned in terms of telling them specifically what not to charge. The reason being is because once you start doing that, the criminal elements is going to continue to take advantage of it, which can be right up front with young men.
Well, that's true. I mean, it's a good conversation and then we have to educate the public as well that
That's correct.
Because of the public safety demands, needs, wants, desires of the community, the cost structure is now X and we have to figure out how to fill that hole.
And then, you know, and I know the city attorney and the police chief have had these conversations because they're out there working hard to bring these folks to be held accountable.
Sure.
And then on the other hand, we're kind of cutting them loose. So again, that's why I say I would just caution that we need to be careful what we ask for.
I completely understand, but we are thankfully experiencing a decline in overall crime.
But there's a reason for that, yeah. And there's a reason for that, you know, you looked at the budget. So, yeah, you know, police is spending a lot of money in jail. But what are the but the results? Crime is down, you know, between 30 and property crimes, depending upon the actual crime, is down anywhere between 33 and 67%. But there's a reason for that, it's because we're fully staffed.
Right.
You know, we have great employees, we pay well, and we bring people to jail when they need to go to jail.
Well, I appreciate that and that's what would be, I think, helpful for me to noodle over is to kind of draw the connective dots. Crime is going down for a number of good reasons, whether or not it's due to holding folks accountable through the municipal court system, I don't know yet in my own mind. I just don't, based on the data. I see fines and forfeitures going down. I don't know about the charging and the connection to that, it's just, I raised the issue. I don't know all the details yet.
And as the council is aware too, we are looking at court alternatives, which
Yep.
I do believe if we can get a good offer from the county, I think that would bode well for us in the whole in the whole area of public safety.
That'll help. Mr. Branstad, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to sort of reinforce the city manager said about with respect to property taxes. There's certainly not a great appetite for property taxes out there amongst the electorate that you have to go to do that. And certainly not to just put money in for a general fund use to do that. On the, and the city is not like the fire district or the school district where there's a solely sole reliance on property taxes that is understood by by voters. So, you know, I think it's very, very difficult for us to go there in that thing. And the other property tax ask that's on the horizon, I don't think in the next, in this coming biennium, but in the biennium after that, will be from the library district when they move forward with their idea about a permanent Lakewood library, which they indicated they would go to voters to establish a taxing district that could then assess a property tax to pay for and bond the construction of a new library of, you know, whether it's a Taj Mahal version or whether it's a more scaled down version, going to be a significant significant amount of money. And that's another district that is solely property tax dependent and that's the case that they can make to voters, whereas a city we can't because we have, you know, lots of pies we can stick our fingers in theoretically. So I do think that the BNO tax structured to protect small businesses, I mean, that's what the state does. This is, I mean, and my wife ran a small business, it was small enough so that every year when she filled out her state tax returns, the BNO tax came out to zero because she got enough credit on it. And the city of Tacoma does the same thing, they have a gross revenue limit, which they don't collect the BNO tax. But it becomes a little bit more complicated to structure. And the other thing that wasn't necessarily presented here, I understand how sales tax gets collected and then makes its way to us in property tax, but, you know, how a BNO tax would get collected or some of these others is, if it's done with a cost, then that impacts the overall value of actually using that strategy.
Well, I'll throw that to Ms. Kraus. It's my understanding with the way we do our sort of unified licensing through the DOR, it's fairly simplified.
It is very simplified for the sales tax because everybody, whether you're in Lakewood or you're from outside remitting the sales tax, it is going to the Department of Revenue. So just one central location for reporting and then we get, you know, our distribution. With the BNO tax, all of the returns will come to the city, we will have to verify, do some types of audits, we'll have to have a good understanding of what applies, you know, for a BNO tax. And, you know, it will take additional personnel. Right now with the taxes, because it's it's a local tax, it has nothing to do with the state, and so we'll have to, you know, be the ones else to to enforce it.
Oh, okay.
So administratively, you're looking at additional personnel. So the numbers that I provided do not include any administration costs.
No, that's fair, that's a fair point. Good to know. We all see no other further hands raised for questions, comments, or feedback. I think that gives you what you need.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
May not be what you want, but it gives you what you need.
It's what it's what it's what you want, Council. Okay, just a couple of other updates. Chief, Police Chief Patrick Smith asked me to pass on to you that they were successful in securing a $131,000 grant from the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority for probably 15 to 17 new flock cameras. And so they they put in a larger request, but I think they were just kind of doling it out. But we did very, very well compared to a number of other cities. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Also on Saturday, I was able to attend the retirement ceremony and change of command for our own Washington State Adjutant General, Major General Brett Doherty, who retired from both active and National Guard service after serving our country for 44 years, including the last 12 as the Adjutant General. I was able to present to him the City Council proclamation. I thanked him for his leadership, his outstanding service, and the great partnership that he's had with the city of Lakewood during his tenure as the Adjutant General. And he too expressed his thanks to the mayor, the council, and the city. And of course, we wished him well. He did, he did express that he did want to try and come to a council meeting the last couple of months, but he's just been very, very busy with the transition that he has going on, both in his professional and his personal life. But again, he did wish me to pass along both his thanks and his gratitude for doing what you did with the proclamation and wanted to wish you all the very best as well.
Great.
And then, you know, it just dawned on me today that today's July 1st, so we're, you know, in the middle of the summer and of course, community events, you know, we get the farmer's market going on, the summer concerts, and we have Summer Fest coming up. And of course, Gim Hay is coming into town, our sister city, and so we're gearing up for all of that. So that's kind of where our focus is the next next couple of weeks or so. So with that, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? All right, seen none, we'll jump to council comments. I'll go ahead and start to my far left, Mr. Bokey. Very good, Mr. Laura Sala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the farmer's market last week as usual, it was really nice, the weather was was good, which we didn't have previous couple of weeks. So the turnout was also really good because of the weather, lots of good food options. So I encourage all of our residents to continue to attend. I want to say thank you to the folks who provided public comments. This is the opportunity for our local residents to provide their opinions and voices and we listen to all of them and take them all into consideration, both in person, online, and things written and submitted in advance. And then finally, I wanted to thank Ms. Kraus for her finance report. I'm looking forward to an in-depth review of those options in a future study session when we go through them. I was curious about, and again, I don't know much about taxes, but I'm going to learn a lot as we go through this. For BNO taxes, is it ever, do we ever tax net instead of gross on that? Is that something people do?
Usually the way it works is on the gross, which is challenging for many small business people, that's why you see thresholds out there.
Yeah, it makes sense if they're running on a really small margin, that means a chunk of that, so that makes sense. Finally, I will be out next week, so look forward to hearing what goes on in my absence.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstad.
Well, glad to have you back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Be able to go and do that. Although you've, between you and the deputy mayor, you've enhanced Councilmember Bokey's resume significantly.
Always happy to do that.
Be able to go and do that. The consent agenda that we passed today was, actually had had some important things on it, but that also speak to decisions that we have to make that are that are deferred. And first of all, the contract to get the interlock and bridge repaired, I mean, it does it does need to be done, it's a it's a safety issue, it's something that's there and there is no one advocating for there being no bridge. But there are in the public indicating that this is an opportunity to take a look about how to perhaps repurpose that bridge, either whether it's the direction of the roadway, some some other things to be able to go and do that. And there is, some of the ideas are, they're not all exactly the same, but they're worthy of consideration. But I think it's important for us as a council that we're looking to try to get this done in the next 90 days, to have it there and that we should not, we have to do something in that window of time to decide what we're going to do when we have a safe bridge to provide purposes to, and so that we don't by not getting around to talking about it and this making a decision about it, get on autopilot to just go back to the way it was, which is, does remain an option, but it, there are other things that should be considered that are that are looking going on down there. So I think that it's something that we need to be looking at a steady session to make some kind of discussions about that and perhaps provide some guidance to the city manager and the Public Works Engineering Department. So that when the bridge repair is completed, that we know what we want to do or if we want some time to get some public feedback in a more, through some meetings or something, that there's time to do that. Because what we don't want to do is get the bridge repaired, start doing what we always done, and then decide we want to do something different because that that would just be awkward. The other thing on the consent agenda has to do with the, we set the public hearing for next month regarding the request of some property owners to vacate the street on 100th Street, which happens to be a street end that was one of the street ends that was studied and we were presented some packages to it. And it actually happens to be a street end that is one of the widest that we have to be able to go and do that. So I think we should be prepared to maybe get some significant public comment in a variety of directions around that action as we look to do with it. And also, it's tied to decide in our mind, you know, what kind of, what do we, how do we want to be consistent with our efforts about encouraging development of street ends while looking to do that while recognizing that Lake Silicon is the body of water with the most street ends. So we don't necessarily have to be developing every one of them, but we can consolidate some dollars to do that. So it's going to be an interesting thing to do that. But I think when we put the notice out around the public hearing, that we should be clear that it we're not vacating a street, that we're vacating a street end that is that is waterfront. And with all the special state rules that go with vacating a waterfront street end to be able to go and do that. But, you know, I kind of thought we were done with the dealing with the interests on Lake Silicon for a while, but apparently not. And I do appreciate the fact that in this particular case, the property owners who have some encroachments are looking and they're making a proposal to rectify it. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I watched on YouTube the last meeting and one of the discussions that I thought was interesting was the Nyanza Road, the road project in I Road Project in Nyanza, and then there were some discussions about the roundabout and the city was recommending an asphalt roundabout, which is different than all of the other roundabouts that we put in. And I think that the reason was to reduce the the initial disturbance really that would be caused by having that area closed down with a concrete roundabout for the cure time and stuff. And then that's valid. I do, you know, if we're looking at the long term of a really busy intersection, there's a reason that people put in concrete roundabouts and it's to avoid maintenance and stuff in the future. And so, you know, I would just encourage the city and us to look at that, you know, that it might be unpleasant, you know, during construction. But it might be the better thing in the end to put another concrete roundabout in there that's not going to have to be maintained for hopefully a long time. So that was just something that came up that I was watching. And other than that, just, you know, I was on vacation and getting back into the swing of things here and excited for all the summer activities. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to finance for Ms. Kraus for talking about the financing options. I think that there's a lot to really consider and think about there. So I'm looking forward to further discussion on that. And I just wanted to tell everybody to have a wonderful Fourth of July. You know, that it's a fun time, but there's a couple regulations. So I hope that everyone adheres to them and has a great time and sees wonderful things in the sky. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I want to say thank you to the team. Patty will fill in for me for June team. Thank you so much. Councilmember Bokey, thank you for taking over the meeting for me. It's good to be back. I do have an invitation to attend the change of command July 24th at 10:00 a.m. on Fort Lewis. So if anyone would care to join me, I would like to go and represent the city the 24th of July, 10:00 a.m.
You're going to do it?
I do plan to attend.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can you come with me?
I can probably. Let's get Ms. Schumacher to put that on our calendars, just to make sure. Oh, that's a good point. I'm not invited. There you go.
I just invited him.
I haven't checked my calendar, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Caulfield. Other than that, thank you guys for, we are a good team. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome back. It's good to see you and see you all. I'm happy to be back. Just a couple of comments on some of the council comments. On the roundabout, I too watched the video from the meeting and actually zoomed in a little bit myself. I would also advocate to the extent we can that we be consistent in the construction of the roundabouts, especially a major one like that coming in and having a visual presence as an entry into the city. So I would prefer not to do asphalt. And frankly, I think we can do, take some of the feedback from the public about maybe coloring the concrete or whatever for those who have some visual challenges to see how the concrete kind of is challenging for some of our older residents to see the differences. So anyway, more to follow on that, but I would not be a big fan of just asphalt. On the other items of public comment, I agree with Mr. Branstadter that, you know, it's great that we've adopted in the consent agenda, the the contract to improve and repair, rather repairing the Interlock and Bridge. But given the public comment tonight and the written comment that we all received, I don't think we should put the conversation on what to do with it once it's repaired on the very, very back burner for years down the road because there are a lot of neighbors I'm hearing from and people in the community who want to at least have a conversation about that. And I know that the projects are separate and different and distinct on the Edgewater or the Interlock and Project rather versus the Mount Tacoma Drive. It's going to be in design in '25, construction '26. But they're somewhat, you know, linked by geography. So we can have a conversation, but we know we don't necessarily have a project at that time. But it's a conversation that I think we shouldn't leave. And then on the other public comment on the legal issue, obviously, we're not going to comment on that. My only comment on the Edgewater property is to emphasize the fact that the individual involved in that matter has been represented by legal counsel. And the issues have been vetted or the opportunity to have the issues vetted in the Pierce County Superior Court have been in play. And the city does nothing but abide by whatever court order is issued. And that is what has happened here. So we can hear a lot about consternation over the issue, but the individual in that particular situation has been well represented by legal counsel. Whether or not he's followed the advice, legal counsel is not our issue. But it has been fully vetted and reviewed by the Pierce County Superior Court and will continue to be perhaps. So again, the city complies with courts' orders after full vetting of the issues. Terms of matters, Pierce Transit, I attended the board meeting this last week while I was on vacation. I zoomed in. It was the one about board composition. As all of you know, we have a seat on the Pierce Transit Commission as a large city. We will continue to retain that seat. The only major change was there was a reconfiguration of the representation by some of the smaller cities. Pialup now is getting their own seat. And I think Silicon and Gig Harbor and University Place are going to be on one seat and then the northern cities, Edgewater, Edgewood, the Pierce County portion of Auburn and some of the other northern portions are going to have their own additional seat. So there'll be a 30-day notice that comes out about that for change of the bylaws and I'll certainly forward that on to you. But our seat and jurisdictional representation remains the same. Let's see. Many of you have heard about a Supreme Court decision, U.S. Supreme Court decision that affirmed the ordinance in Grants Pass, Oregon with regard to homelessness and camping, so to speak, on public property. So I assume we'll get some feedback on that down the road that we can discuss and chat about what options the city of Lakewood will have in light of that decision. And because of that decision, I did get a call from Councilmember John Hines from Tacoma. And like the sort of regional conversation we convene on public safety, he's suggesting there should be perhaps an opportunity for a regional conversation on the impacts of this decision because otherwise the balloon might get squeezed from one jurisdiction to the next, to the next, to the next. And without some sort of a regional conversation, Tacoma's concern is that everything pushes to and through the Tacoma boundary, which could be, I get it, they have services there more than other cities and towns. But that was the request.
So my mother told me if I don't have anything nice to say, I shouldn't say anything. So I'm not going to say anything. Tacoma issue, Mayor.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to have a chat, to be a good regional partner, but I hear what you're saying. Okay, so that is what I have for my comments for tonight. Anything for the good of the order? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.